The notice requirement provided for the open public meeting law has been satisfied. Notice was properly given and said notice having been transmitted to the Puria News Star Ledger on Tuesday, January 2018 as well as posting on the bulletin board in the city clerk's office. Madam Clerk, may I have a roll call please?
Council members, am I here?
Present.
Hockaday?
Here.
Sorch?
Here.
Tolliver?
Here.
Vice President Mills-Ransome?
Present.
Council President McRae?
Present.
All members present, we have a call.
Madam Clerk, are there any corresponding communications from the mayor?
His Honor, the Mayor Adrian Rapp will present a proclamation to the First Intermodal Society of Plainfield at the regular meeting on December 11, 2018.
The bill list and other financial documents have been sent to the council via email. We will now have a break in the meeting for a presentation from the Union County. From the County of Union will provide a brief presentation on the first East Front Street intersection safety improvement project at Wachong Avenue, Roosevelt Avenue, Sanford Avenue, and Norwood Avenue, and Richmond Street. Council, can we please move to the front row? And Council, will you remain at the front row for this ceremony presentation? How you feeling?
Good evening, Council, members of the public. My name is Ray Sullivan. I am a project manager for Union County Division of Engineering. During the past several years, the county has had an opportunity to study corridors and infrastructure improvements throughout Union County, and there is been very...
Yeah, that's the council.
We've had an opportunity to study infrastructure.
Stand right over this way.
That way, you're safer.
Sorry. Thank you. Taking it from the top. We have an exciting opportunity working with our partners at the North Jersey American Planning Authority to introduce a corridor improvement that we have presented along Front Street. And I'd like to introduce Christine Mittman, a project manager from the NJTPA. Thank you, Christine.
Good evening, everyone. So I work for North Jersey Transportation Planning Authority. We are the metropolitan planning organization that provides the federal funds to our subregions. Union County is one of our subregions. There's 15 in our region. And I manage a program called the Local Safety Program. It uses highway safety improvement program funds from Federal Highway, and it addresses safety improvements in fresh phone intersections and corridors. The county came to us with an application a number of years ago for this project, and we're currently advancing it through the design phase. We are providing the funding for design, construction, and construction inspection. This is the second of three projects that we're currently working on in the city of Plainfield. We just recently had Federal Highway authorize a three-intersection project on West 7th Street that will go to construction in...
Construction is scheduled for spring of 2019. It's approximately 200 days of progress, and we have already secured through the open bit a contract engineer and a contractor, and we should be breaking ground probably March 1st.
And with respect to this project, we're currently in the preliminary engineering phase, and we have a consultant, a manager, that's working on the design right now. And part of the federal process is to have, to present to the public, and we're looking for feedback, if anyone has any feedback on what we're proposing here. So I'm going to pass it over now to John, and he's the design engineer on the project. And thank you.
Thank you.
May I request that I stand back here? I can speak loudly.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Take the mic.
Yes. So again, my name is John Hill. I'm the design engineer for this particular project, and I'm going to quickly go over what we're proposing to do for your city. So we're located, the project is located along the East Front Street corridor, and these are the different sites. So there's Wachong Ave., Roosevelt Ave., Sanford Ave., and Richmond Street. While they're talking about the existing, the purpose of this project is just basically to improve these different intersections due to the existing crash rates that we've analyzed along this corridor. So again, this is discussing the crash rates. We're going into detail about this, but this justifies why we're making these different improvements at these different intersections. So basically, at Sanford Ave., there's no traffic signal or any type of real control at that three-legged intersection. So we're going to improve that intersection, and this is right across from the senior center over there. For the most part, at these different intersections, we're going to upgrade the traffic signal equipment, make sure all the signs, the signals are complying with the current federal requirements, which is MUTCD, which is the Manual Uniform Traffic Control Devices, and to make sure everything meets the federal ADA compliance requirements. Again, our goal is to upgrade everything to current standards, provide pedestrian devices, and I'll get into that a little bit more. This is specific to Sanford Ave. Upgrade the pavement markings where we need to, and again, make the ADA ramps ADA compliant. And again, make things February guidelines. So we're also going to improve the light in out there at these intersections where we deem it necessary, that it doesn't meet the current standards. We're going to improve the drainage units at these particular intersections where they're, again, they're not compliant to the current standards. And wherever necessary, we're going to try to improve, make some other amendments to the intersections. We will be following the guidelines put out by the city as best as we can. This includes the pedestrian lighting and the traffic signal, traffic intersection lighting. So at Wachong Ave., this is just an aerial view of the intersection, just to get you bearing of it. Couple photos of the existing conditions that we're going to improve. So this is what we're planning on doing. And I apologize, it's so small, but we provide you, each member should have a handout. The 11x17 handout that you gave everybody. So this is basically demonstrating what we're planning on doing. As you can see in this, currently, there's a bus stop down here. We're proposing to adjusting it up into this corridor. So this is Wachong Ave., this is East Front Street. So by changing out the bus stop from this location to this location, we will not be eliminating any parking stalls. We're basically adding parking stalls here, but removing them there. So there's a net difference of parking stalls. Where you're seeing the gray, the dark gray, because of the improvements, we're doing the striping pavement markings, we're going to resurface the roadway in that area. You can see in the yellow, in these different corners, we looked at the different corners for ADA compliance, and we determined that curb ramps do not, the current curb ramps do not meet the current standards. So we're proposing to replace those with current standards, put brand-new crosswalks in. And you can see in the red, these would be the brand-new traffic signals at each corner. Currently, you have what is a horizontal traffic signal. We will put in the county standard with the cantilever arm and the standard vertical traffic signal lights. And again, we'll provide the architectural type of lighting at the intersections. This is just a rendering of what we're planning on doing in front of one of the business entrances, is that we would go back to basically the front door, replace the sidewalk where necessary, and put brand-new curb ramps in. So that's Wachong Ave. And again, we would provide all new traffic signals, signs where needed, and the current heads, which are, sorry, the traffic signal lights, which are eight inches, we'd be upgrading those to 12 inches LED, so they would be more visible. All these signs will be updated. This particular intersection, on this corner here, there is a security camera, traffic security camera that was installed on top of the signal pole. We'll relocate that because the new signal poles won't have that capability to have that So going to the next intersection, this is Roosevelt Avenue. Again, an aerial view of it. More pictures of existing condition that we could replace them. And just to point out, see, this is the traffic signal I was telling you currently have right there. So we replace where it's a horizontal light, a vertical light. Again, this is similar to Wachong, except for the bus stops. We basically be tearing up the whole center of the intersection, resurfacing, putting brand-new crosswalks, new curb ramps at every corner, brand-new traffic signals at every corner. And again, there is a, we will not be eliminating any parking stalls at this intersection. So none removed, none added. Now Sanford Ave., this is the more interesting one. As you can see, we have a T-intersection with East Front Street, the main road, in front of the senior center. And at this corner, there's a bank. So this is just a photo of it looking downstream, and again, point of reference, banks there, senior centers over here. Currently, there was installed this rapid beacon device where this droves, and I believe it is always active. This droves and allows pedestrians to cross here. But you can see vehicles park along here, and it's difficult to see pedestrians that want to cross this road here. We were out there on a field visit once, and we sat there for a while waiting to cross, and nobody stopped. We actually started entering the intersection, and people still wouldn't stop for us. So what we're proposing to do is, again, resurface the road, brand-new crosswalks, new curb ramps at each of the legs. And what we're going to do is remove this and put in what's referred to a pedestrian hybrid beacon system. This currently is used at several other locations in the county. One of them is the, I think it's a Tabor Mall. Is that correct?
Lord and Tatum.
Lord and Tatum, sorry. And it's, this will be a pedestrian-activated system, so similar to a pedestrian crosswalk, where you go up there and you push a button. You push this button, this will activate the light system. It is not a per se traffic signal where it is constantly functioning, going from red to yellow to green. This only has red and yellow. So what happens is a person goes up there, pushes the button, and I believe the yellow starts flashing, then it goes to yellow steady, and then red, then it changes to red. Vehicles have to stop on a red signal, allows pedestrians across. Once it gets to a certain time limit, the red starts to blink, telling pedestrians, you need to get across this a little bit quicker, and it tells the vehicles, you're about to get the green light. There's no green light, though. And then it goes, once it's done flashing red, it goes to black, and then the vehicles need to go across. So that would, sorry, that would be installed, we'd install one in front of the intersection on either sides, and that would control this, the northbound side, and it could control the southbound side. Richmond Street, Norwood, is similar to Wachong, and we're going to replace the whole intersection, again, resurface it, go and resurface it, new crosswalks, new curb ramps. This one is a little bit more unique because the legs on these corners have a flatter curve to them. We've been informed by local residents that there used to be trolley trucks that went around this intersection, and believe that that may be the reason why there's such a flat curve on these curbs on this location. So what we're proposing, we're actually presenting two different concepts for this intersection. Again, I'm sorry, it's so small. But we would put in a tighter curb radius here that matches all four, the other two corners, and this will shorten up the pedestrian crossing, going across this way, and this way, and also that way. It'll, and provide brand-new traffic signals at each corner. We will not need to take right-of-way at this corner, but we're proposing to take right-of-way at this corner, and that's because of the traffic signal and the sidewalk that we need to make that turn. Again, that's an ADA federal requirement that we have to have sidewalks at a certain width, and that's the reason why we're doing it there. As you can see that there's a, this is, the Housing Authority owns this property here. There's already a fence jaw in this property, so we wouldn't be touching that. There's a couple of trees in there, we wouldn't be touching that. We're just taking a small sliver up in the front corner there. And this is the second option, which you can see is similar, but when we did look at the curb ramps, and again, all the curb ramps we looked at did not meet the current standards, except for this one. This one curb ramp actually was okay. Our concern with this one, it is referred to as an apex curb ramp. That means it's sitting at the point of this radius. That's not the ideal situation for a curb ramp. You actually want two different curb ramps. So even though we're showing this, this is not the ideal situation. It is acceptable, but it's not the ideal situation. Again, we would still need to take a right-of-way at this corner. So the only benefit of doing this concept is that we wouldn't necessarily need to rip up that curb ramp. And you can see also, we, because we weren't adjusting this curb ramp, we left a flatter radius, therefore, there is no justification to tighten this radius on this side either. So that's basically everything in a nutshell. During construction, most of the construction will be done fairly quickly. We would still allow pedestrian access at these different intersections. We would develop it so that pedestrians, if they had to go through this, we would reroute them around that intersection. At this time, we are anticipating completing the design in September 2019, and we're anticipating construction beginning in the summer of 2020. And that ends my presentation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Council, do we have any questions? Mr. Good?
None.
Councilman Hockaday?
So are there some advantages with putting the bus station after the light than before the light? Is that a primary concern?
Yes, currently, the bus stop is sitting here. So as you can see, we're actually making this a right-turn lane. If the bus stops here, they basically occupy that right-turn lane. By moving that bus stop to another location, this now becomes essentially free-flowing. And so the bus will go across the intersection and allow anybody to make these movements to go to cross. Easier.
Okay. Ms. Tolliver?
I have a question. You didn't include, but I have a question about an elusive spot for notes of County Road, East Front and Terrell Road. There's no markings on the Plainfield side for like a left-hand turn or right-hand turn and go straight. A lot of times, I observe people, they don't know if you're going straight or you're going left, and then sometimes two cars are going straight because they assume you're going left. That's a dangerous intersection there that I feel someone needs to take a look at. There's markings on Scotch plain side, left, go straight, but there's none on the Plainfield side, and I've seen a whole lot of almost accidents because I travel that way.
So is that the area where the former Dunkin' Donuts was?
Yes.
So you're trying to navigate left or right at that intersection, and you feel that there's some concern there regarding striping and pavement markings?
Well, when the road construction was going to Terrell Road, they put the markings there, left, right, straight. And then about a month or so after that, someone came through and covered the markings up with black. So people that want to turn left to go onto Terrell Road toward 22 don't know what the people on the right are doing. Or if people are, if you're in a left-hand lane, they think you're going to the left, and you go straight, they come around you on the right, and someone's going to get hurt. I brought it up, but since you are integrating on Front Street, I figured I might want to Terrell Road needs to be looked at, Terrell in front.
Thank you for your comments. I'm going to speak to Tom Medio, the county engineer, as well as Angela Paparella, who does our, is the bureau chief of the line strapping department?
Yeah.
We will take double look at the plans because that intersection was upgraded in 2009 and 10, and I know the road had been resurfaced as well post-2010, so we would be more than happy to take a look at the strapping to ensure that the plans meet the requirements. Thank you.
So, a question about like the pedestrian walkway, especially, I think it was East Front by the senior center. It is difficult, like for people that yield to pedestrians. I've been there too. But in terms of what you're proposing, do you believe that there's going to be a noticeable difference in terms of cars yielding to pedestrians? I guess it's in this one we were talking about.
Yes, this is Sanford. And again, because it is a traffic signal, even though it's a state law, people are supposed to stop, or individuals, this is a actual traffic signal that can be enforced by local And because, again, if you can see, let's see if I go back. You can see that even though this is a flashing beacon, it's kind of hard to see. You got trees, and it's going to be buried in there, you got vehicles, so it's not at a nice height for vehicles, because again, you're driving down this road, and you're paying attention more in front of it. By this flashing constantly, it becomes just random noise in the background. People don't pay attention to it. So what we're proposing, if you can envision, a traffic signal pole that will be coming up along here, coming across, and the lights will be hanging here, so it will be basically in your line of sight driving down the road. All of a sudden, it's going to be black, and then you're going to start seeing these colors flashing. And again, once it turns red, like my pointer there, you are supposed to stop. So we think, and also, you can also see that we have the vehicles parked here. We are actually, sorry, I didn't emphasize that. On this particular one, we are actually removing one parking stall. This is the only intersection where we're actually doing that. So we are actually proposing to eliminate parking in this general area. Pushing back, as you can see, there's a stop bar here and a stop bar there. So nobody really should be parking in between the stop bars. So we would be pushing the parking further away. So again, anybody's driving down here, they hopefully will have a better line of sight than anybody that's trying to leave this curb ramp here to cross.
And those signs are activated by pedestrians, correct?
Correct. That would be a pedestrian going up there, physically pushing a button to activate the signal.
Question for the questions.
Mr. Sorch?
Question for the future, I think. This is, and I'm talking about East 7th Street, the intersections of Belvedere and Leland. So Belvedere, that's, there's a lot of pedestrian traffic going through Netherwood Station. The city has tried to do some things to traffic calm that section, but it's not very effective. So I would hope that we could look at that. And then one block east, which is Leland, hopes just opened a school where there were previously, there was no activity at all. Now, I think there's like 300 students being driven to school by their parents. So those intersections don't really have, they don't have any improvements, except for just a basic stop sign. Maybe there's a little bit of striping, but nothing like what you're talking about. And I think there's a lot of potential for accidents, pedestrian and vehicle accidents.
Thank you very much for your question. East 7th Street is Phase 3 of our three-phased project, and as a matter of fact, when I sent the application to Christine Mittman, the photograph I took for the successful application was the corner of Leland and East 7th Street. It was a very old 1970-style intersection, slightly slanted, so we are well aware of that area, and you'll see that in future infrastructure improvements.
If you go back there now, I think the school just opened up about a month...
The school, that was the former Armory?
Yes.
Yes, I'm very familiar with that intersection.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Mills-Ransome?
No questions.
No questions. We thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Next, we will have representatives from PSENG will give a brief presentation regarding the soil remediation project at Municipal Police Parking Lot.
I appreciate the invite to come in and provide a status update for our former Plainfield Gas Works site remediation project. Lou Han, I am the PSENG project manager, responsible for managing the project that we're just about to undertake here in Plainfield. Next slide, please. The current slide shows the location of the former Plainfield Gas Works site. It's actually located right behind the police department building here. I advanced out, so... Yeah, I wanted to just point out a couple of the features here, if I can. The police department parking lot that you're familiar with, East Fourth Street Extension, and then the commuter parking lot, Court Place, give you an overview of the location of the work area. The actual remediation work will primarily be done in this area, and then we're going to do some restoration work in the balance of the police department and also East Fourth Street. Next slide, please. So back in the mid-1800s, roughly 1860s until early 1920s, predecessors, the PSENG manufactured gas had a facility located on that parcel. And then with the advent of natural gas in the 50s, the MGP plan actually became defunct and was demolished over time. PSENG sold the property off to the city for use as it is now today for municipal purposes. In August of 2017, PSENG came before a council, and we had a remediation agreement presented and approved to do the work. So now we're here preparing to mobilize and get started with that remediation project. So the next slide actually provides project overview. So generally, what we'll be doing is removing about the top 10 feet of soil by excavation, removing any remnants of the old plants, foundations, infrastructure as part of that, and then stabilizing the soil beneath that to a depth of about 40 feet, which is about bedrock. Then we'll be restoring all the remediated areas, following the streetscape specifications Then we'll be restoring all the remediated areas, following the streetscape specifications that the city has and everything for East Fourth Street. We're going to take that restoration from Roosevelt all the way up to Watchum Avenue. The project schedule right now, the timeline, is we'd be getting the real remediation about early 2019. So we're thinking January, boots on the ground. Maybe some, you know, small amount of surveying leading up to that in December. But really in January, we'd be getting started. Estimated project duration of about a year to 16 months is what we're anticipating. Anticipated work hours, Monday through Friday, seven to four. Some of the next slides will show kind of the phases of remediation. We're going to try and break the remediation up into several phases. Try and minimize the impact as best we can to both the police and the court employees as well as the community. So the first phase will involve the remediation of the Fourth Street Extension as well as the municipal parking lot. And we'll be restoring both of those areas back to a usable functionality as we complete the remediation, with the anticipation that East Fourth Street will be back open to traffic, hopefully towards mid to late summer of this coming year, 2019. Following completion of those areas, we'll move into restoration in what's shown here as Phase Three, but then start work in the police department parking lot, while keeping access to the back of the police department as we discussed with Public Safety, to make sure that that area is accessible. And then we'll move into the final phase, which will be a wrap-up of the restoration work in that Phase Two and then a smaller area just behind the police department. So during that phase, we'll be keeping access available to the back of the police department so that the police have access at all times to the, to the full perimeter of the building. Let's see. I wanted to include here a slide that just shows, you know, how we'll work to keep both the workers during remediation projects safe as well as the public, working to minimize dust and odors, realizing that we're right here in downtown. We'll be utilizing things like a odor control foam as necessary if we get into any type of odors and misting as needed with water and/or the same foam to control any dust that may be generated as we're doing the work. And just for a quick update on what we've done so far in terms of our outreach, we've established a website where information can be found and we'll be periodically updating that website with information on the project. We've also established a community information line where you can telephone us and leave messages if folks have questions, and an email address where questions can also be submitted to the company for additional information of any of the stakeholders or community concerns. Thus far, we have completed an outreach session for interested city employees, particularly for the court and the police department. And we also hosted in October a community information session that was held at the Arts Lofts. We mailed out a public notification and fact sheet, both in English and Spanish, to property owners and residents in the vicinity of the work. We've met with the Plainfield Health Officer, we've met with the Union County Health Officer and provided them notice of the upcoming work. And our intent is to also send out a weekly email update at the end of each week on what we've completed for the, for that current week and what we anticipate completing in the following week. So that we'll be, you know, keeping everybody informed as we move through the process. So I think with that, I just.
I thought there was supposed to be some type of air quality testing that you were going to inform residents about.
That's correct. So as part of our performance of this type of work, we have a perimeter air monitoring plan that's been established with routine monitoring that'll be done real-time during the work. We will also be doing weekly confirmatory testing, which is where we take actual samples of the air, send it off for laboratory analysis. And the results from that confirmatory sampling will be posted routinely on the webpage as the results become available. And then as well, the county health officer has also requested that we include that in the distribution of the data. So that's the plan for the air monitoring. And you'll see stations similar to that station, we'll have multiple stations set up that'll include the instrumentation for that monitoring.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Good?
Are you expecting any problems with contamination when you're digging and moving all this stuff around as far as the ground?
So, so during this type of work, because it is contaminated soil, it's done by contractors who specialize in remediation work. It's done in a very controlled fashion where we fence off the area and we limit who can enter the site, as well as control like the potential for odors and dust during the digging with the foams and with water mist. Then as we load trucks to transport soil from the site, they will undergo wheel wash. So we'll wash down the wheels of the trucks, make sure we don't track anything out of the area. But the purpose of the work is to, is to clean up that contaminated soil.
How effective are your precautions as far as the air and so forth?
Very, yeah, very protective, very effective. We, three years ago, we completed a similar project in downtown Hoboken. We excavated an entire city block there to bedrock, essentially to bedrock, removing all of that soil, replacing it with clean fill. And now they've developed that site with a, with a new building, residential building.
That was going to be one of my questions, had the council president and I have brought it up, about the air quality. So thank you so much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Mr. Hockaday.
Yeah, so I'm wondering, what prompted this, some kind of why now type of thing? Why wasn't it done sooner considering that? And then, once this is done, what benefits will the, the city have now that this property is remediated?
Okay. So the timeline on these sites, a lot of these sites were not identified as, they're, they're old. They were backfilled. They were identified typically in about the 1980s. And then at that time, they were required to undergo through the NJDEP, an investigator, so a site investigation, to identify if there was contamination present, a remedial investigation to find out how much and how extensive the contamination is, and then a remedial design aspect, which is where you develop a work plan to determine how you're going to actually remediate the site. And these sites typically have both soil contamination and groundwater contamination. So you're investigating both phases of, for both of those media, is what we call them, to determine what the impacts are. So the timeline on establishing what you're going to do with these sites tends to, to take time. As well, there are numerous of these sites. So, you know, we work within our budgets to, to pace these out over a timeline. So it does take time to get them to the point where we can clean them up. So then in terms of the benefits, we will have that superficial 10 feet of soil removed and then replaced with clean fill. And then we'll be, PSENG will have met our remedial obligations at the site. You know, future use at that point will be, we're intending it'll go back to police municipal parking going forward.
So like in your Hoboken example, you know, they built a building there, which probably wasn't a building before. Ours is restoring to its original use. So I'm just wondering, what would have happened had we not undertaken this plan?
If we had not undertaken the project?
This project, yeah.
So the state of New Jersey requires the project be undertaken to remediate the soil and then ultimately the groundwater. So we are obligated from a regulatory standpoint with the state to do that, to do that work. And we are under.
In terms of the, the health and safety of our residents is what I'm thinking about.
Okay. So current, in its current condition, that material's all capped underneath asphalt. So as it resides under the ground, it's in a safe state. It's, it's maintained in that fashion such that there's no direct contact to the residents of that soil that's contaminated. So the only time that there would be a potential for that contact would be if it were to be excavated and removed, exposed. So by eliminating especially that top 10 feet of soil, future disturbance of that area, you have clean fill there. It'd be less of a concern long-term.
Thanks.
Mr. Oliver.
So you said it only contaminated, it's down in the ground, so it's not a contamination to the resident. What about rain, rainwater, and it runs down into that area and it runs off into other areas? Is that a concern for contamination?
So right now, that, the majority of that area is paved. And the stormwater that runs onto that paved parking lot and the street is collected through the storm drains and then transported off-site. So you're not having direct contact of that stormwater generally with any contamination. In areas where you have vegetation, you may have percolation through that soil. And we do know that there is contamination in the groundwater there at the site as well. What we anticipate is by doing the removal of the top 10 feet and the stabilization of the deeper material, the groundwater over time will clean up naturally.
And how long do you expect that to import to the project?
That can take, that can take a decade potentially or more.
So you said in the 80s is when they discovered this area was contaminated?
This area, I know PSENG had entered into a access agreement with the city of Plainfield in 2001. So I believe this one was a little later timeline. So our, our original investigations began in early 2000s here in Plainfield.
So we're in 2018, but we took so long for them to remediate the problem?
So again, it's, it's a matter of the phases of investigation that are undertaken. And it's, it's logistics with the numerous sites that we do have, as well as the complexity of certain sites.
So how many more of these sites are in office?
At the, my understanding is this is the only manufactured gas plant here in the city of Plainfield.
One other question. So when the project starts, that whole area, there's going to be still, the municipal court is going to still be open and people are going to be coming in and out through the day. If there's someone there with some type of respiratory problem or something, is there any way they're going to be warned or is it going to be safe for them to come in that area and breathe in here?
So we'll have fencing, we'll have fencing up with privacy screening around that. So that should also help to mitigate any concern for the general public walking in. The sites are very controlled. We'll have a health and safety officer full-time out there as well as a perimeter monitoring technician and onsite engineering oversight. So the site should be adequately coordinated off from the general public to prevent any potential for contact with any.
Will the city get any updated on the monitoring of the perspective of the air? How clear it is, how clean it is?
I'm sure that that can, yeah, we can certainly provide that. I mean, we're going to be doing weekly through the web, through our weekly email update and posting it on the web as well.
Mr. Oliver.
Yeah, what's the estimated, I guess, timeline from start to finish?
So roughly from January to about December of next year, so about 12 months. I'm showing 12 to 16 months. We do have some, some additional prep work that we're going through right now with the city. So, you know, we're anticipating that 12 to 16.
What's the question?
Mr. Stewart.
So these, these are city properties and the city is not paying anything towards the remediation. It's all being covered by PSENG.
That's correct.
So I think it opens up development potential for the city in the future because it's right next to the downtown train station. And without remediation, that would be a hindrance to, I mean, that's just a comment I just want to throw out. I'm sure that our economic development people have recognized that, but I just wanted to mention it. I think this is a really good thing for the city.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mills, answer them.
Any other questions?
Hope you thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Your presentation.
Yeah, I appreciate it as well. Thank you.
The reorganization meeting is tentatively scheduled for Monday, January 7, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. Are there any questions from the council? And Mr. Oliver?
None.
Mr. Hockaday?
None.
Mr. Good?
No, councilman.
Mr. Stewart? Mr. Oliver?
No questions.
Mr. Mills, answer them.
No questions.
Okay. Public comments will be limited to resolutions and ordinance being considered this evening. Each speaker will be given a total of three minutes. The floor is now open.
I've looked at the public comment. Period. Close.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose any extensions? MC 2018 gives 2017, I mean 27 through MC 2018-32 and bond ordinance 1266 are scheduled for public hearing and second meeting on December 11, 2018, as advertised. Are there any questions from the council on these ordinance? Mr. Oliver?
None.
Mr. Hockaday?
None.
Mr. Good?
None, councilman.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes, for MC 27, that's the one with the salary range, I believe. Just a question for the administration, why the upper part of the salary range for the secretaries is $80,000, where it looks like other positions, some of the other positions, which are management positions, are actually a little bit lower?
Certainly. Well, obviously our range just allows for the ability of the administration to, or I guess for that secretary position over time, based on longevity, based on contracts to be paid within that range. So it's not uncommon for a secretary position over the length of a career to reach a number of $80,000.
But some of the management positions look like they're actually have a range with a lower ceiling, which I don't understand. And I, I believe that once we pass a salary ordinance, the, the council has no say in then strictly administrative decision as to what the salaries are going to be?
Well, that, that would be entirely accurate. The, the positions are still subject to the budget, which is adopted by council. And of course, in every budget book that you get, all of the salaries and positions are listed. So council does have a clear understanding of what everyone is being paid within that department.
But the line, like our, our power in adjusting salary lines does not extend to specific salaries of positions, if I understand our budget process?
Well, yes, the, the, it is the role of the administration to negotiate salaries with individual employees. That is correct. However, it always is subject to budgetary limitations.
Okay, so yeah, and so I generally support this ordinance, but that, that, that particular aspect of it makes no sense to me. And I would not want to support it. I would ask the administration to rethink that one.
Mr. Oliver.
No questions.
Mr. Mills, answer them.
Yeah.
Okay. Do we have consensus to add to the agenda?
He's so moved.
Second. All in favor?